How are you?
I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is the public input period. If there's anyone that wishes to address council briefly with some of their concerns, you have two minutes of our time. Please come forward, state your name, where you live, and have our attention. Is there anyone that wishes to address council at the public input period? Yes, Billy, I believe.
I'd like to address council.
Yes, you do, sir. Yes.
Should I sit down here?
Sure, if you want. And it's Billy Mary, sorry.
Yes, Billy Mary, I'm a Roslyn resident, long-term Roslyn resident. And I'm here today to talk about our kids. I'm the president of the Trail Stingrays and Area Swim Team. And we've been incorporating TRP fees in our program for the last couple of years. And I submitted a grant application to recover some of that money. So I'd just like to reinforce the importance of what we're doing here. We're for the kids. You know, we're a volunteer group of mostly Roslyn residents volunteering. We have Beaver Valley and Trail residents all participating. So we're kind of an all-area, you know, group. And that's how recreation, I think, needs to be. You know, I traveled quite a bit as a youth, and I didn't find anywhere better to raise my kids than around here. And so "raise my kids," that's the key words there. I still want to do that, and I participate in this club to help everybody else's kids. And we need your support. We're short of some money right now. I'm not sure if everybody's clear on where that money is or how much it is. It's about, you know, we have $9,000 and change on the table today. And I have a total of about 15 to 17 totally outstanding. So I'm not sure, our cycles don't line up very well. Their grant application date is, our registration is after that date, so it makes us intererears every year. So to apply for the reimbursement of the funds, I'll always be a year out. It doesn't cycle better than that. Maybe I can, you know, change our world around and get BCSSA to help move some dates around and that, but that's unlikely. So it just puts me in a kind of behind-the-eight-ball position every year. So I just, I'm asking for your support, and they're for our kids, and that's what we're in here for. So that's about all I have to say. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much, Billy. And thanks for stepping forward to take control of that. We appreciate it. And as you know, that's coming up in our agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to address council at the public input period? Yes, please.
My name is Petri Reto. I'm one of the new business owners of Roslyn Beer Company. Many of you, well, probably about a third of the town has been there already. So it's been a great, great start. We really appreciate the support. I'm not here to get into what the guidelines are for signage, because it is kind of confusing as far as what our heritage look is or isn't. It is really confusing as far as what can go up and what can't go up. Now, I'm just only asking that the committee or the council, however you're referred to, looks into the idea of signage at all. Because now, my understanding is that there's no signage allowed besides on your own building. And if that's what it comes down to, then we really need to look at how we can help businesses in the future, not just mine, but other businesses, to advertise at any capacity. Not going up the highway, not that mess of people poaching signs, but just anywhere. Like, now I've gotten to the thick of it, and I'm just realizing that essentially, there's nowhere to put a sign except for on your own property. And as you know, we're set back kind of from where the hardware store is. So we have those, we're fighting a battle as it is, as far as people coming up the hill, forget that, because we know that there's a bylaw that has no signage, which I'm completely against, as everyone knows. Because I think that if we have a heritage committee, and we have a, what is it, a sign committee? There's a different one.
Design review panel.
Design review panel. Then there could be a happy medium in that signage where you could have, I know there's some people that think there would be 30 or 40 signs put up, but I completely disagree with that. You might have maybe between five and 10, because you do still have to pay for them. You could strike a deal with the landowner, and I thought I did have a good deal with the landowner, but unfortunately, it was about four feet off, and it was municipal land, and it gets very confusing. But ultimately, what I was reading is that I guess that there's no signage allowed at all unless it's on your own building. And if that's the case in Roslyn or in the greater Roslyn area, we have a, we need to look at that big time, because it doesn't make any sense. Especially for a building that's set back or a few blocks off or wherever it may be. And if the question is, well, it doesn't fit our look for our town, then we need to really look deeper as a community or as a town for what our future wants to be. Because I'm, I love this town more than anything. There's a reason why we live here. But I think we all need to realize that it's about businesses, and it's about local kind of interaction, how businesses and people correspond with each other, not just, oh, it's always been that way. Right? So we can't have, we can't have a rule that has no signs allowed anywhere, because it doesn't help anyone except for some, I don't even know what it would help. You know what I mean? Maybe someone can give me some better feedback on that. But I know that there are two different things for sure that we're confusing as far as the bylaw for billboards, and then there's actual no signage allowed at all except for, so it does, there's a lot of As and Bs underneath the rules. Maybe you can clarify them for me, but that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much. And coming up in our information items is your request and design review panel recommendations, and we'll be dealing with that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to address public input? Is that, yes?
Hi.
Hi.
Sue Wrigley. I'd just like to support Petri on a little bit of that in terms of, I think council needs to be a little bit flexible in terms of supporting businesses that are successful. Think outside the box. Look at, yes, we've got design review committees, and we've got heritage laws, but it's good to think outside the box and make sure that we are really supporting businesses, successful businesses in this town, because that's what's going to support our town. It's really important to make sure that they can be successful. And a setback like their business, we need to make sure that, you know, people know that that business is in town and be a little flexible on signage.
Thank you, Ms. Wrigley. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council at the public input period? Second time, yes, public input period?
Is there going to be time to talk about Stingrays later, or do you want us to do it now?
I would do it now.
Okay.
So my name is Sean Miller, Roslyn resident. And I just want to, I'm here with Billy and a bunch of other parents from the Stingrays Swim Club.
You should also, if they come in, they can come in and...
Sure, come in and...
You can go on the other end, too.
Yeah, come on down the other end and mull a boat or whatever. It's all good. Yeah, come on in. Come over this way if you want. That way here. I know it's not always good to sit at this end of the table, but we're all welcome. Okay, everybody, is everybody in? Carry on, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm a new Stingrays parent and a new person working with the executive board. And I just want to let council know that not only is this about the current group of kids, we've had 16 new swimmers come from Roslyn who Stingrays is supporting with the TRP fee. And it puts the club, not only for the past money, but the current set of swimmers in a very tough and difficult situation, because we're going to have to tell those kids that they can't swim, or their parents are going to have to pay for that TRP fee. I spent the weekend calling the parents of all 16 of those kids, and basically, it comes down to they won't be swimming. People just can't afford that money. And I think it's, it's just bad for Roslyn. These kids are starting to get into a new cross-training sport that benefits their health through the winter, helps kids who aren't necessarily skiers, aren't necessarily hockey players, gives them a chance. My son is, I mean, it's the sport he shines in. And I think that not supporting the money that was previously promised, the money moving forward, is going to make it very difficult for Roslyn kids to have another option for a sport to do in the winter.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to address public input period? Please come forward. Anybody in the hall, is there anyone open the hallway? Is there anyone that wants to come?
Couple people in the hall.
Thanks for, there you go. That's a light switch. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to the public input period? Please. No? Seeing none, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Move by, Council Speer, seconded by Thatcher, discussion on the agenda. Seeing none, all in favor? Sorry?
Weren't we removing that?
Ah, yes, we were. Thank you very much for bringing that up. With the removal of, what's the number, eight?
Eight.
C? Eight C or D? I'll have to go down.
B.
Sorry, for Bob?
B.
Okay, with the removal of 8B, thank you very much, Council Moore. All right, with that amendment, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Motion to adopt the minutes of September 8th, 14th. Move by. Moore, seconded by Fisher, discussion on those minutes. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, the motion's carried. Motion that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on September 29th be adopted. Move by. Thatcher, seconded by...
We're right here.
Moore, any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that motion's carried. Is there a motion that the minutes of the property tax sale held on September 30, 14 be adopted? Move by. Speer, and thank you, seconded by... Moore, thank you. Discussion on those? Counsel, oh, sorry, Counsel Speer, do you have any on those? No, Counsel Moore?
Well, I was just curious, I don't recall that we got a notice that this was happening in advance. I'm just, would just be nice in the future that we would know that it was going on before we do something.
Did you add that this goes in the paper?
Okay, but it come to council.
Yeah, and I think that the ad was also attached to your information package.
Yes, it was.
Was it? Okay, I missed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So anything further on those? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried, thank you. The minutes of the special meeting of council held on October 3rd be adopted. Move by. Moore, seconded by Fisher, discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, the motion's carried. Petitions and delegations, first up is the Friends of the Roslyn Range. Please, Mr. Carter and your group come forward and give us a presentation. Thank you. Are you using that?
No, I'm not.
Okay, great, thanks.
Just going to speak very briefly.
Good, thank you.
I came in as a delegation, because City Council has been supporting what we've been trying to do in the Roslyn Range for a long time, letters of support and so on. I probably don't have to speak at length of the tremendous value of that now proposed as a rec site, taking in all the high country between Red Mountain and Big Red Cats. Huge increase in public use, a lot of pressure on it from both ends. And people actually come here to live and to recreate, because they really like that piece of free public recreation. We've taken it now to the point where the Recreation Sites and Trails Branch will grant us that recreation site if, by November the 1st, we file a management plan developed by the community that is acceptable to the Rec and Trails Branch. So first message is, this is not a done deal. It depends upon them accepting our management plan. And we think we've put together a really good plan that focuses on building new for the commu, for the future. Oh, and incidentally, as you build new for the future, you build fewer huts, because always been the issue up there is all those little huts. Fewer, but better, consolidate, and incidentally, oh yeah, you have to clean up the old stuff. So that's, that's something that volunteers have apparently become inspired by. They say, gee, I'd love to do that. And the plan covers a lot of other things. There's opportunities to open up access and work on a lot better parking, things like that. And we'll be looking for lots and lots of volunteers. But the message right now is, we're going to need public support to get the Recreation Sites and Trails Branch to be creative about this. It stretches what they have said they're looking for, and we're saying to them, this is what the community can do, is willing to do. This is what it takes to sell it to the community, and we hope that they'll buy it. So I'm looking again for your support when we've gone through the public meeting that's going to happen on the 22nd of October. We may be coming back to you to say, no, could you stand up and back this plan for us along with the rest of the community? I just want you to be aware of where your support has gone. Also, the, the, excuse me, the plan mentions a map. And Roslyn was one of the communities through the CBT Community Initiatives funding that supported us in developing that map. It's not out yet, but it's in the works, and it will be out shortly in time for that October 22nd meeting. And it looks like we're getting value for our money out of it. And the last message is, we're going to change the name. It's been informally called the Nancy Green Recreation Site. Very confusing. Years ago, Nancy Green said, "Don't name another thing after me." So it probably will end up being RRRS, the Roslyn Range Recreation Site. So that's where we are now, and I'm hoping that we get a lot of, this is not the point where we want the public to go out and quibble about the details. We want to get down to say, that's the general shape. Let's go for it. Ministry, Recreation Sites and Trails, do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions of Mr. Carter before we let you go?
I have some, just to cry.
Please, Counsel.
I may have many questions, but, so Les, thank you for your presentation. And I've looked at the management plan, and I guess, you know, I guess I'm curious a little bit about the, you know, the old traditional historical cabins that are up there and what their real future is, because I've talked to a lot of people, and I'm interested to come to the meeting on October 22nd, but at the same time, I know that there are some sites up there that are going to be taken down or burned down, or, and maybe you could just explain a little bit more.
Okay, what happens, if we can get the ministry to buy this plan, what happens is that the huts, the old huts that are noted in the plan now, stay while we go through a transition strategy of consolidating them. For instance, Berry Ridge Cabin and Sunspot Cabin, who, that are looked after by Bob McLean and his friends, we talked about that. They said they would be happy, over time, to consolidate them into one that meets the new standards. Now, that's one of the things that's important about the old huts, is that they don't meet the standards that the ministry wants and that the new whole demographic going up there wants. They're not mouse-proof, they're not rodent-proof. People bring their kids up there now, and they crawl around on the floor. There are, there are things moving north with the rodent population that we don't want to have to deal with. And the ministry is, the Rec and Trails Branch is willing to put funding into developing good cabins up there, but they're not going to fund all the old ones, or replacing them right on site. That's way too many. We were told we could have five, the plan has nine in it. The number that's out there now is way over that, it's over a dozen. So this is a halfway. And the people that actually actively look after the cabins have gone through this plan and said, gulp, we can handle that, it looks like a good idea. We're actually, we actually negotiated with the people who, not the ones who complain about losing them, but the ones who actually look after them and make sure they're still there, have said, we think this will work.
Great, thank you. Further? Thanks very much for the presentation, Mr. Carter. Much appreciated. Next up on the delegation list is Mr. Frye. Is Mr. Frye here? Please come forward, and I'll get the heck out of the way, apparently.
Never ready. I'm going to go.
Come on, we can, you know, follow Charlie.
Don't smoke it. It's not bad stuff. Don't smoke it.
That's it. I got an open chair, everybody. Bet that I don't love you. So, Mr. Frye, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I wonder if you need some lights turned down. Someone can just...
Is that better?
Yeah, that's better, yeah.
That's good. That's good.
Okay, can you back it up? Yeah. All right. Anyway, there we go.
What are you doing?
Not done.
Check the heat.
Oh, Charlie, Charlie.
Yeah.
Every time we use, we just...
Can you do this?
Okay, so my name is Darrell Frye. I work for the company called Passive Remediation Systems. We've passed out a couple of bags, and that is really the essential thing that we'll be talking to you about. So what our company does is intensive agroforestry, and we do that in the manner of carbon-negative processes. So the detail... So the detail of the project is to utilize, sorry, I'll go from here, these slides are going to be auto-tapping. So what we see here today is our town of Roslyn, and this is Red Mountain. And those blue ponds up above there, those are the mining tailing ponds on the back of Red. And they are a beautiful, huge, flat area that we want to plant some trees on and generate carbon credits for the town of Roslyn. And I think we'll be able to generate more than enough carbon credits just for town of Roslyn, but probably enough for most of the communities in this area. So the plan is to...
They'll get, they'll get the home menu.
Okay. So we're going to cap the, cap the area with soil first, plant about 5,000 trees. We're going to hire local sulk trick students to do most of the work in it. And we'd like to turn it into what's called an interpretive center for the carbon-negative So, I'm sorry that these slides are so out of order, but, so there's one of the ponds and the other pond. So again, what is a carbon-negative process? You're probably all aware of what a carbon-neutral process is, and that is what you typically do when you are planting a tree, and it takes carbon from the atmosphere. And the tree uses that carbon to build itself, and then eventually, it dies and releases that atmosphere to, or releases that carbon back to the atmosphere. That is what our cycle is here on the left. So that would be called the carb, the active carbon cycle. Now, what you hold in your hands here, the biochar, is what is really the negative carbon cycle. And that is really what our, our, our project is about, educating people on what the negative carbon cycle is. So the negative carbon cycle is, the tree grows, captures the carbon from the atmosphere, then we turn it into biochar, that's what's in these bags. And when we do that, we are permanently capturing the CO2 from the atmosphere. And biochar is a product, as you may well know, we date time when we look at the earth in carbon, carbon dating. So essentially, it lasts for, well, as long as I know, 2,000 years. So, so what we are doing is, we are taking, ah, these slides are totally out, but anyway. I apologize. So what we're doing is, this, these areas are heavily laced with arsenic. They are right now leaching into Little Sheep Creek, typically. So in our process, when we plant our trees, and then we take those trees and turn them into biochar, we'll be taking the arsenic from the soil, putting it into the tree. At the tree's autumn phase, they absorb the arsenic in the soil. Then we turn it into biochar, we are essentially, and I don't know if all of you will find this as exciting as I do, but I find this just terribly exciting. Because one of the big questions is, how do we get rid of environmental issues like arsenic in soil? Well, great, put it in a tree. Well, what happens to it then? Well, what does happen to it is, it, it actually doesn't burn off in gases when we heat it up. It actually becomes part of the structure of the biochar. So we're essentially sequestering environmental issues for 2,000 years in the biochar, and not just these issues, but of course, we are also taking CO2 from the atmosphere. So we're contributing to, hopefully, dealing with this worldwide problem of having too many fossil fuels in our atmosphere that are causing, causing so much pollution. So what I'm looking for today is, we're looking for letter of support for our project from council, and we are applying to the CBT for funding for this particular project. And it's my understanding that we needed to come and speak to you, because you would need to put forward, that you support the project out of the usual or dates. So that's why we came to present to council on this particular matter.
Is that your presentation, Mr. Frye?
Yes.
And good job negotiating the slide, slide problems. Good job. So anyway, if we can, if we can get the lights back on and projector off, then we'll just ask questions. Are there any questions of Mr. Frye? Smalley, also Moore?
Oh yeah, I've got a couple. Thank you very much for the presentation. Very, very interesting. Got a couple of questions. First of all, who's the owner of the land there?
A company called Tremetco Industries.
Okay, and they're a partner with you on this?
Well, we, we're in negotiations with them. They want to, they, they're looking at what their liability issues are. Obviously, they're have, they want to sell this property as a real estate development. And we'll be doing them a favor, because we'll be remediating the property and making it safe for people.
Okay, and then this is a question that shows my ignorance of biochar, but how do you make it? Do you do it on-site? Do you have a facility to process it on-site?
Well, it's, it's, typically, how it's made is kind of interesting, and then I'll answer the rest of your question. So what we do is, typically, you have a, let's say, it's like an oven. So think of it, of an oven like this that we put the wood into, and then another oven around it.
I can see your oven, sorry, Darrell.
Another large glass.
You want to commercialize it, you're talking this way.
So another large glass, and what we do is, we heat up that biochar inside this area with no oxygen. And it burns off the gases and leaves the structure like this. So now, how are we going to get that biochar? And that's what's really interesting. Biochar, a lot of people understand that it has many, many uses. It's very good for soil, and I don't want to stress the truth, but the truth is, if you put it in your soil, it's a fantastic soil amendment, because, and I hope all of you tonight will go home and Google biochar, and I'm totally serious about that. This small piece of biochar has the same amount of surface area that a football field has. So if you could unfold it, it would expand to the size of a football field. So now, why is that so interesting? Well, when you put that in the ground, this captures water, it captures nutrients, and it makes little tiny homes for all the microorganisms that the soil needs to be healthy. So if you put this in your compost pile, it will compost more quickly, because it activates growth. So when we look at studies on, when you put this in your soil, plants grow 400 to 800% more production.
Even with the arsenic they're going to pull out of this soil up there?
Well, that's the interesting thing. Biochar is carbon. So how do we filter our water? We use a carbon filter. So it's a natural filter. And so it naturally will filter the arsenic out of the ground, but also, the trees are filtering the arsenic out of the ground. So how are we going to get this much biochar? Well, like I mentioned, everyone knows these great properties of biochar, and everyone gets really excited when you look at it and say, well, great, let's start saving the atmosphere and capturing it. And I can put it in my garden, and that's great. I can use it to filter my septic field, that's great. I can use it to filter the water from my watershed, for example. Awesome things. But how do we generate enough of it? Well, the other day, I was meeting with a company called Global Bio Coal. And Global Bio Coal is a company that makes coal. And they take the pine beetle kill from British Columbia, they have five plants around British Columbia, making 250 tons of this a year, and they sell it to Korea as coal for $200 a ton, which is in a lot of profit margin. They phoned us up and said, what's this biochar thing? Because we've been looking at how to make enough biochar, and it's just, it's impossible. They said, what's this biochar? They said, what's this biochar thing? And I said to them, well, if you turn up your ovens by a few degrees, you'll make biochar. And the value of this biochar is $400 to $500 a ton. And if we put it through another small process, we will make active carbon biochar, or active carbon. And active carbon goes in your filters for your furnace, in your filters for your smokestacks, in your Brita filter, multiuses, and that is worth about $2,300 a ton. So they have said to us, look, we really want to prove this out. We will supply you with all the biochar you need for this project. So 25 tons, 50 tons of it? We will, we can do things with this project that have never been done before because people have never had this amount of supply. And just as an added thing, Celgar also is going to supply us with the soil. They're going to deliver the soil free. And I mean, that's, I think it's a huge opportunity, so...
So where will it be processed? On-site?
No, actually, we'll have it processed at their, in Lundby is their main, well, is the closest one?
So you'll be taking the trees out, getting them out there?
We'll truck it to here. We will probably process some ourselves there, but you know, it will be in an oven that does, you know, maybe a quarter a ton at a time. I wouldn't know exactly how much, but we will have one. We'll have the students do the process as an educational thing. We've even talked about making a pizza oven.
Great. Really interesting.
I think we should all go home and Google biochar for sure, but I think...
Yeah, just how long would it be before we started harvesting the trees to make the biochar?
Well, we, there is some scrub brush up there already, and everyone knows there's a lot of brush up there on Red. The road will need to be brushed. So whatever we need to cut down, we'll start making right away. There is some existing trees on there. We will, we, my understanding is we will be able to adopt those trees and be delivering carbon credits next year. So although we'll be planting trees that will be quite small, they, you know, we will have carbon credits from making... Well, you get carbon credits in a couple ways. One of the ways you do it is by making biochar. But you can't make biochar from a tree that you've already got carbon credits from. So, yeah. So how long will it be until we cut down those trees? Like, it'll be 15 years before we cut down those trees, but there's lots of other sources for biochar. We don't need to use those trees to make biochar.
Anything further, Mr. Frye? Thank you very much, Mr. Frye. There's probably still more questions than we have time for answers, but we understand you're looking...
It's going in my purse? It's worth what? No understanding.
I understand that you're looking for... Thank you, Ms. Spear. And I understand that you're looking for a letter of support, and that will come back to council at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you use the letter of support prior to that for the grant application? It's due October 22nd.
So if it's unanimous, we can make that motion out if it's unanimous.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
If it's unanimous. Does everybody agree that we can make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, make the motion.
Moved by Moore, seconded by Spear, that we give a letter of support. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving right along, item 7A, request for council decision on Deer Park Trails from the planner. Is there a motion that council approve the request from the Cooney Columbia Trail Society to utilize the property known as Lot 24 on Deer Park Hill for recreational trails? And further, the council directs staff to amend the zoning bylaw to rent trails to be developed in all zones in the city. Is there a move up to that? Moved by Councilor Spear. Seconded by Councilor Moore. And I'm just gonna, like, I wouldn't mind changing it around a little bit. If there's anybody that's against this motion, please speak against it, because I think we're all in favor of it, and I don't know that we want to be pandering around how much we're all in favor of it. But if there's anyone against it, let's speak to it now. No? Thank you very much. Seeing none, then all in favor on the motion. Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. 7B, the Jubilee Park Greening Project. Is there a motion that council approve the request from the RSS, I like using that word, Playground Committee to install the outdoor classroom seating area model for us as proposed as proposed in the east side of Jubilee. Field Greening Project, moved by Fisher, seconded by Moore. Same thing. Is anybody wish to speak against this? No? Seeing none. All on the motion, all in favor. Opposed? Motion's carried. Item C, council approve the request for two Jubilee Street property owners to remove the knotweed infestation adjacent to their properties. And further, the council set a budget amount to address knotweed infestation annually based on priority areas identified in the upcoming study from the invasive plant committee. Moved by Moore, seconded by Spear.
I've got a couple of comments.
Is this against though? I mean, that's, I think we should...
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Questions, fine.
Yeah, okay. So we're talking about a budget for 1,500 to deal with what we're looking at here. And I'm wondering, I think it was only one quote in there, and I see it's a specialist. I'm wondering if there is anyone else who can give us the quote on that job, or that's it? Okay.
The nod over in the corner was a spur. Everyone's edification, I can't see.
And I think it looks like this is sort of the tip of the iceberg, that there's a lot of this. And so I'm just hoping that part of this is that staff will work with Jen Golda on a bigger plan. Maybe this is just the start, and then we'll have a real plan that'll come to our budget, our financial plan conversation. Is that the plan?
Yep.
Your worship, we're looking at handling this the same way we do dangerous trees, is we identify the priorities, and within that budget restraint, we treat whatever area we can so that you're based on the ones that are the most...
Based on in the budget on the hazard level.
And that budget, budget discussion.
And is it just for knotweed, or is it other invasives that are being...
This one's knotweed, but there are other invasives for sure that are, that we may...
They will be identified in the plan.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Fisher?
Well, the comment that I make is that we have Roslin's on a herbicide-free zone, right? And these invasive plants have really gone crazy in our area. There's a whole pile of them down on our property, on our, that we're trying to deal with hand-pulling in a bunch of ridiculous ways. And we're never going to get ahead of it. There's Scotch Broom, which has taken over Vancouver Island, and it's now in our area. And we have an area that's really suitable to a lot of these invasive plants. And if we don't get on it, probably in a much more aggressive way, we're going to have them outcompete our native plants really shortly. There was a common name, Monkehead or something, that started up in Roslin. You can buy it at us. You can just, you can buy it. So somebody planted it in their yard. There's a whole bunch of invasive weed species that can be bought, but this one was planted in Roslin. Now it's come down the creek, down Trail Creek, and it's all the way past the golf course now, and it's heading down to Warfield. And it'll be in Warfield soon. See, it probably is there now, I don't know. But in order to pull this stuff, it's super labor-intensive. So I think at some point here, pretty quickly, we should be listening to Jen, and we should be amending some of the herbicide rules that we have in the city of Roslin so that people can take care of these things on their own without making specific applications to the city of Roslin, like the tree bylaw. That's ridiculous, I think, that you would say, I've got knotweed in my yard, and I can't spray it, or I can't hire a licensed applicator until I go to the city of Roslin. It's everywhere, not just that plant. But there's a whole pile of them. I mean, there's dozens.
Yeah? Counselor?
Yeah, you know, I agree with what Councilor Fisher's saying, and I know I live kind of down in that same neck of the woods, and yeah, they are highly invasive. And if you look around the boulevards of Roslin, or you look around people's properties and the damage that some of those plants can do, it's frightening, actually. And I, you know, I can't remember how many years ago it was on council where we had some plans around trying to battle off these invasive plants. But I think we do, seriously, we need a plan, and we might have to choose, make some decisions that are not necessarily favorable to being herbicide-free because, yeah, it's a war, and I think we have to find some ways to defeat it. It's ruining a lot of property.
Counselor Moore?
I think there's a little misunderstanding here. The reason these property owners are coming to the city is this invasive plant is on city property. They could hire their own person to bring in the required licensed herbicide and deal with this. We don't have, we actually have a policy that we don't use herbicides on our own city properties, right? When we're looking after our parks and whatnot. But the reason we are coming to us is because it's not our property. It's not a regulation that says they couldn't handle it on their own property. So there is a little bit different there. We actually did defeat the pesticide bylaw a few years ago, so we don't have that. Just a point of clarification.
Okay, I think we should stay on the motion, but I think we're all in agreement that they should be allowed to do this, right? Okay. So Ms. Ania Ruivo, motion, please. Or should I just read it again, or it hasn't been changed? Thank you very much. The council approved the request from the Jubilee Street property owners. Has everybody got all that? And further, okay, on that motion, all in favor. Opposed? Motion's carried. And that, of course, included the budget amount. Have you got that? Perfect. D, council approve option number one as presented for the event sign to be installed in 2015. And further, the council directs staff to draft a usage policy and budget for council consideration. Moved by Thatcher, seconded by Spear. Discussion, Thatcher?
No, I think it's an impressive-looking sign. It's, the lighting and everything that was put in there for it, it's already in place, so we do need something at that end of town, you know, for any events happening in our community. So I think it's a, I think it's a good option to vote for.
Great. You, Spear?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's certainly an improvement over the banner that was hanging and swinging and served its function for a number of years, but the letters always flew off at some point. So it is a beautiful structure, and yeah, I'm really excited about that being put up right at the entrance to downtown.
Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I think it's great. The only question I have, is a question to staff, is have they seen the actual letters that'll go on? Because some of those letters that are attached in those little tracks look really cheesy, and the sign is beautiful. But I'm just wondering if staff has seen the actual letters that are being proposed? You know? So at some point, there'd be an option. Yeah, make sure they're cheesy.
Thank you. Counselor Fisher?
No.
No? Thank you. Okay, on that motion, all in favor. Opposed? That motion's carried. Request from the Roslin Council for Arts and Culture regarding an information sign. Is there a motion that council approve the Roslin Council for Arts and Culture's chosen location for the information sign and provides the Roslin Council for Arts and Culture with up to $500 of in-kind city services for the installation of the footings? Moved by Moore, seconded by Fisher. Discussion, Counselor Moore?
Nope, I think that's great. It's great to have a way to have...
Anything further? Oh, sorry. I thought you said no. Anything further?
Well, I was curious a little bit about the location of it sitting over here, the faves rock and monument and, I don't know. I just, I mean, it makes sense when I look at it visually, but I don't know. Something in me twigs, mm, disrespectful. So anyway, that's just me.
Okay, but I, Ms. Butler, we had this discussion, so about Ms. Butler, go ahead.
I just want to make, after further discussions after Jen came out, we may look at moving the rock to the other side in the garden across and have it facing the street, because right now it's facing into the town square, so you don't really see the plaque. So we're looking at other options actually for the rock.
Okay.
But the intent's the same. Okay? On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? Motion's carried. The write-off, request for council's decision, the write-off of property tax, motion that council directs staff to petition the Ministry of Community Support and Cultural Development to approve the write-off of property taxes, late payment penalties, and interest totaling $3,104 for uncollectible taxes on a manufactured home and a city property with a lease agreement. Yeah, we'll just do that one, first of all. Is there a mover to that, please? Moved by Moore, seconded by Fisher. Discussion on that?
Yeah, I just have a question. Do we have a strategy for avoiding these situations in the future? My concern is, when we're looking at a mobile home, like, if you can't collect because the person disappears, and you also can't collect from the property owner because they don't own the structure we tax, we could face this situation again. And I'm wondering what other municipalities do to solve it?
Ms. Butler?
This is a bit of a play, and through all municipalities, the dill trailer park. The one thing that we're really lucky with is the managers with trailer parks now are really proactive in getting it turned around and cleaning it up, and I think that will help a lot.
Thank you. Any further?
I have a question. Have we had a situation like this in the town? Because I don't recall. We've had to dispose of a tube prior.
Okay.
It's not an epidemic?
No, it's not.
Okay. Anything further on this motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Motion that council directs staff to petition the Ministry of Community Support and Cultural Development to approve the write-off of the outstanding charges waiting to an unpaid lease agreement totaling $879. Moved by Thatcher, seconded by Fisher. Discussion?
No.
Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Request arising correspondence, the letter from Mr. Hill regarding Trail Commercial Hockey League and financial assistance for use of facilities, pools, and parks. This is a, perhaps I should just go there and... So Mr. Hill is stating that, well, first of all, I believe that the situation has been rectified. I don't know that it's out in the public, but from what I've been told, the city of Trail has upped the ante to the players that wish to play in the Trail Commercial Hockey League from Roslin, and that it is not an issue. And if there's someone here from there that could come forward and speak to that, I'd appreciate it. No? And I know I'm putting on your spot, but anyway, it's my opinion that it's been alleviated for these guys, for the Trail Hockey League players, the city of Trail threw more money at it.
Really?
Yep. Really. And I don't know that they've come out and said that publicly, but I know, well, I know from people that are playing in the league that it may not be an issue anymore. So I don't know if we maybe refer this back to see if it's, because we don't officially know that, right? Ms. Butler?
Your worship, I could track the minutes of the trail meetings and see if anything comes up there. But from my understanding, from one of the sites, they received a grant, a...
From the city of Trail?
...to pay for their TRP or whatever it's for.
So I think, yeah, I think, yeah, I know, which makes the, which makes the next discussion even more important. But I think, so maybe without throwing this item away, if we can just get a motion to refer it back so we can get more information? Is that okay? Because I don't want to...
Yeah, so moved.
Thank you, Counselor Spear. Seconded, motion to refer? On a motion to refer, all in favor. Opposed? The motion's carried. Thank you. So I just want to just say a little bit about Trail Residency Program and discussions that we've been having that were tied to the, our sewer discussions. And the city of Trail, not everyone at the city of Trail, but some members of the city of Trail feel that the Trail Residency Program costs more than it's worth. And I think it's, I think it's very, no, but I think it's very important that we understand that, and that, you know, we, we in Roslin, as a council and as a community, have, you know, stood fast, and our community said, you know, we don't negotiate. We stood fast, saying, we don't agree with this policy, we think it's unfair. We stood fast. And now it's come to the point where now they are actually making exceptions for groups, especially, I guess, at election time, I don't know. But that are coming forward and going against their own policies. So I think it's important that we recognize that as we move forward. Yeah, that's for discussion.
Okay.
Thanks. So if I can just go to... So 8B is gone. Everyone understands that? That's the letter regarding proper debt. Correspondence from Mr. Hamm regarding the utility bill. I'm sure you've all read it here. The staff recommendation is that, the motion that council directs staff to use the average monthly utility charge for 12, from 2012, of $299.44 in order to recalculate the 2013 and 2014 utility charges for the Rock Cut Neighborhood Club Limited. Is there a mover to that? Is there a mover to any of the, uh, the options and alternatives here? I think what, what's being said here is if the meter was wrong, okay, the meter was wrong. If, if, when meters fail, they fail at the bottom end, they don't fail, fail high, they fail low. However, that the amount that was charged for a period of time when there was a renter in that, in the property was significantly higher than the average. And with the new meter, now that we have a new meter, we have accurate data and, uh, the owner is saying that let's just use that data to recalculate the period for when the meter could be, could have been not working properly. So I think it's, it's not a reasonable requ, unreasonable request, for sure. Counselor?
Okay. I, I had, I was confused by this report, to be the truth. I found it, I found it a little bit hard to follow. So it seems as though, because the meter was ours and it failed, right, that we certainly have a, you know, a responsibility on this. And I thought that the owner's, you know, proposal seemed reasonable. Also, I was confused about what time period we were going back to to look at this, because we got paid for what was charged when the tenant was there. We really should only, I, I thought, we should only be looking at when the tenant moved out, which I think was July of 2013, until the meter was put in, which was March of 2014, right? So of that period of time, and then look at whatever the reasonable average rate was. That's what I was saying. Now, I'm thinking this report didn't say that. I'm thinking this report was taking the payment back farther. But, but quite honestly, I was quite confused by it.
I think what, I think what this highlights is the fact that if the meter failed back whenever, then that number would have failed low.
Yes.
So, so the owner is saying, we go back then, and if it failed and it was low, I'll pay that. And if it was, because the meter failed, if it was high, we will use the average to calculate the payment for those years. I mean, if we're talking, are we talking, the option one is, uh, $4,080?
So was the owner happy with the proposal that staff put forward?
I haven't talked...
Because I know the motion in April, they weren't happy with that, and I'm just wondering if this was a, if there was conversation about this. There seem to be big gaps in conversation that also sort of bothered me.
Well, I think, yeah, well, council got a very in-depth report with usage and month-by-month usage that was that thick, right? So this report probably isn't all the data that we had back then, and for clarity, I thought perhaps it was important that we don't cloud, cloud the waters with, uh, every monthly utility bill going back to 2011 or 2010, I think it was even before that. So if you go to the letter from, I guess this one's Lois', yeah, that's, the memorandum from Lois of October 8th, right? About that one?
Look at the email from her, that.
Well, it's, yeah, it's in our package.
Yeah.
The resolve that council directs staff, this is her motion, or what she thinks is reasonable, and it provides the Rock Cut with a credit of 4,000 and change. The owner has not found a solution because it wasn't requested, I'm sorry, uh, eight to nine months' usage. Go back to 2012, an average of the uses. If there's any shortage in the uses in this period, based on the new meter consumption, he would pay that. Right?
Okay, I'll make a motion. My motion will be that we take the, the property owner's recommendation of how to resolve this and resolve it that way, because I think we had a big responsibility here ourselves. And I'm not actually sure how that dollar works out, but, and, and from the report, I honestly couldn't tell if that's what Lois was actually proposing or not. But I think what he suggested here was, was quite reasonable, and so that's my motion, do what he suggests.
And second of by Thatcher. So you got a good handle on that, and perhaps you, can you read something to that effect, Ms. Anya Ruivo, so that people here...
It's all the, um, property owner, fill that in, be granted his request, uh, with three points in his letter of, of his email, um, to average the last eight, nine months' usage. So as it outlines there, the, um, billing for usage year-to-date 2014, and sure remove all late charges, um, and keep them on account.
Okay.
So we'll just make the average.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I'd like to...
Yeah, sorry.
I, I think it's the fair way to go, because, uh, the new meter is going, it provides an accurate reading of that, of the usage, and going back the last two years from, you know, using that, that accurate data from the new, the new meter, I think it's probably going to be closer than anything else. I think it's a, I think it's a fair, fair compromise.
Okay. Any further? All right, on the motion, all in favor. Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Consent calendar, I think that's where we had it, I mean? Yeah, information items. Motion that the information items are received and recommendations within are acted upon, subject to council approval, all that stuff. So is there a mover to that, first of all? Move by Moore, second of by Spearon, thank you very much. So now, information items that we wish to discuss, please.
Okay. Uh, E-H-K-M-O-P.
Sorry, E-H-K-M-N?
E-H-K-M, as in Moore.
Yeah.
O-P.
Fisher?
C, that's fine.
Yeah? Thatcher?
Uh, C, because I, C and all the rest are, yeah.
C, and I just want to make sure that we have H, we do. Okay, so, sorry?
No, I'm good, I'm good, they're all covered, I'm just checking.
Okay, and if we have another one, we can also... All right, so the first one's E, so, uh, Councilmore, you brought it up first.
No, C.
Oh, you said C?
I said C.
No, I have C.
Got her.
Oh, no. Yeah, I, I brought that up because they don't seem accurate from what's happened in our community last, over the last, uh, there's a couple statistics missing off that, so just wondering if, uh, how accurate this report is.
We can certainly ask the question. I mean, usually, in the past, prior to, uh, change in command, the, uh, the staff sergeant came and presented to us sort of, and this new, uh, staff sergeant has been here, actually, he got here the, two days before the, uh, the incident at the, at the Feeny property. So I have, I've met him, but I haven't met him on this, but we can certainly ask any questions if you want.
See, that, that isn't, that isn't on this...
Yeah, and that could be, I don't know the dates of it, but I, we can certainly ask the questions, and I'm prepared to do that.
I think, I would be curious to, you know, have up-to-date staff on it, uh, and I...
We can certainly, okay, then, I think, uh, we can just ask Mr. Oakley, that's Mr. Oakley, yes, uh, you can ask him to come to council if you want, and I'm sure he'd be more than welcome to come and present that. Is that, that might make it a lot easier than us. Is that okay? Yeah?
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah? Okay, with that?
Yeah, because I, I was also curious about, you know, the staff and the increases around that, and is it all kind of, you know, a related, you know, group or people or whatever? Because that's significant from 16 to 24 in my mind.
Yeah.
It's not big, but for Roseland, that's an increase, right? So, yeah, I'd like to see those...
Okay, so I think, I'm just, turn to Tracy for a second.
I just think the public is aware that usually those conversations are in camera.
Yeah.
Right, but this report is public, but we will bring Mr. Oakley, we will ask Mr. Oakley to come to the next regular meeting of council if he can.
The regular meeting?
Yep, and at an in-camera session, so that we get clarification, and then we can give those results, once that discussion's had, we can give the results in public. Right? Ms. Butler? Okay, so I don't know, don't think we need a motion to that, we'll just do that, stop, we'll just do that. Okay? And all on C?
That's it, yeah.
Now we'll get to E. Counselor Moore?
Okay. We have been round and round on our recreation policy. Our intent was to help out various groups that had to pay the differential fee to Trail. We originally set this up, um, and we had a $20,000 amount in there, and it was, it was never, you know, we never got to $20,000. But now, my understanding is that due to some changes in the stingrays, what they've, what they've done, they missed a year where they didn't, they didn't put in a, a request. So we looked at that and thought, people weren't using the fund, and we cut it down. Now, you look at how the need has been here and people who've applied, and now, of course, the amount that we had allocated for this year, we've used up before the stingray even came in the door, um, basically. And I just think, you know, it's kind of like this, this rolling snowball of an issue, like, we would like to resolve the recreation issue in Trail for good and for all and be done with it, and hopefully, maybe that'll happen with the new councils, there may be new thinking. It sounds like there's already new thinking down there in Trail. But I, I was wondering if perhaps there's another place in the budget that we could go back and find some money that we haven't spent. I was thinking particularly the, uh, council conference budget, because I don't, I don't think we spent all that, and perhaps we could take the money from there, top up our rec budget, and maybe even bring it back to the 20,000 if that was, you know, I don't know how much money's in that. I, I sent a note up to Lois, and I didn't follow up with her today because I, I got busy. But, um, you know, to see if we could do that, not go all the way back to the period that they missed, because we don't want to open this up to be a retroactive, a retroactive payment. So they missed, that's on them, but the fact that, you know, there's, this is a great program that serves a lot of our kids, and there's other inconsistencies in our program, like, we have it now, anyone who has a spring sport, they come in and can get their funds paid right away, because they're first and the pot is full. Anyone who has their registrations at the end of the year, they're going to get pretty much shortchanged every time, just because of the way we have the, and that wasn't our intent. Our intent was to help all youth and seniors and people with disabilities to be able to use the facilities down there. So I think there's fundamental fairness issue that we're not addressing, but I think we can, if we can find some other money available. So I would like to make a motion to, uh, request staff, and I don't know, well, maybe it's a question through the staff.
Yeah, I think that we should start there.
Let's start with that.
I think we can a motion to amend the financial plan.
That's right.
And then we would fight. But I need a dollar amount that you want to amend the financial plan with, and then we would look for those dollars.
Okay.
And I, I don't know that a motion to amend, just a second, I don't know that a motion to amend the financial plan right now is where we want to be. There is still some money left in the budget that we could approve this evening to the stingrays that they have to build up the...
You're talking about what's in the report, $15,000?
Yes, and I, I also think, given the City of Trail's new, uh, enlightenment, to provide grants to groups, that I would encourage the stingrays to pursue that. And if that doesn't happen, then I would think that they could come back to council and ask us to amend our financial plan. But I think the first step is, would be to use what we have in our budget, and I totally agree with that, because that's why it's there. And I also think that, uh, given recent history, it would be a good plan for the stingrays to go as, as members of the Commercial Hockey League did, go to the City of Trail and say, this is a hardship on us and, you know, and for all the good reasons, and ask the City of Trail what they're prepared to do. And I, and I think we might find that we don't need to amend our financial plan, and I think timing is perfect, and I think it could be done, uh, at Trail's next meeting. So that's where I would leave, and I, you know, certainly, if you wish to make that motion to the financial plan, we can do that in a second. I think, Mr. Counselor Fisher had something to say, but I would think that if we proceed with providing the monies in that, that's there now, without amending the financial plan, have the stingrays go forward and see what they can do, and if they can't go there, then come back. Counselor Fisher?
That was pretty close.
Sorry.
You just kept going, it was good, you were on a roll. But there's 4,700 bucks left in there, right?
Yeah.
Is that right? What do you have there?
There's 2,696 if council approves, um, the other two grants that are on the agenda tonight.
Right. Was there a previous grant? I'm just...
There were two previous grants to softball and baseball, I think.
Right, so what's the, and that was, this Roseland seniors?
Yeah, Roseland seniors for $1,722.
I've got it.
And Special Olympics for 339.
Right, and then the other two grants are 1,200 and 1,000?
Yes.
All right.
So can we make a motion then to, for the staffs, to accept the staff recommendation of the 26, I don't have the recommendation in front of me.
Rashid, please, we don't need a recommendation of that.
Oh, that's right, it's in, it's in, sorry, it's in there. I'm sorry. It's in the information items themselves, for those that don't know, that's a recommendation of staff already. Okay? So we'll move right along then. Yes, please?
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, this whole, you know, Trail residency cost, or whatever you want to call it, has, has been assorting our side for a long time. And I think we did do, we tried to, as the council, to do due diligence by trying to at least cover some of the costs for some of the groups, and as Councilmore said, we did have, um, a greater amount in there, and as it wasn't being used, we, you know, we used money to, to alter in our budget and our financial plan. So I was going to suggest an amendment of, you know, to 10,000, but you know what? I think that, you know, in light of what we've heard tonight about the hockey team, that perhaps your group should go and, um, and ask Trail for some kind of a grant in aid as well. Um, otherwise, you know, we are going to have to, um, we're going to have to amend the financial plan, and, and that requires a fair conversation around the table by council. So it is unfortunate, the way the, I guess, you know, the way you, you explained about the, um, the application process and where it comes in in the year, and it's kind of first come, first served. I guess if we knew ahead of time, or if, if the city knew that you needed, you know, $10,000 per year, you know, on a pretty solid basis, and that you could guarantee that there were going to be not many kids come forth, um, to swim, then that might even help us out with our, with our financial plan. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm just in favor of going with this recommendation right now from staff, and if, you know, you know, you could go down and ask them and then come back, that would, that's possible too.
But I think in the spirit, in our new spirit of cooperation between the regions and our regional district, this could be a very significant step in solving this problem. For example, the stingrays go to the City of Trail and say, look, if Roseland made an exception, they bucked up for us, can you help us? And I'm sure, if you talk, Mr. Mary, you and I have had discussions, if you talk to them and they say yes, then this could be a, could be a big step in solving this issue once and for all. Ms. Butler?
And you were just going to need time to talk, look at the budget and see where there's potential.
So if, so we'll, uh, let Mr. Mary know officially that we will, that this motion has been carried, and Mr. Mary, uh, on behalf of the stingrays, if you approach City of Trail, and if you get nowhere, please let us know, and we'll go from there. Yeah. All right?
And we have no ability to talk right now with the way council works?
I'm sorry?
Do we have no ability to ask a question or talk right now with the way council works?
That's, yeah, pretty much the way it is, because otherwise, if we let everyone get involved in the middle of the conversations, we'll be here forever, and I think we base our decisions on what you've told us earlier today, what we have in front of us, and, uh, as I said before, if there's more, uh, things that have to be done, we'll do it. Thank you.
Oh, I had one with those things, right, it was just a tidbit, but it wasn't really about the stingrays, it was about the seniors, um, the, the seniors' application, because when I look at the seniors in Roseland, it's considered 55-plus.
Yeah.
And yet, at Trail, at the pool, you're considered a senior at 60-plus, and I just wonder if that ever came up in any of the dialogue around, um, the Roseland seniors that...
No, because that would only, that would only affect our ability to grant to the Roseland seniors, doesn't, doesn't affect what happens down in Trail at sixty.
No, but what I'm saying is if, if we were consistent with the, with the seniors' date, number, age down there, then there may be less people on the seniors' list, even though I know there's not that many, but, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what I'm saying.
Between fifty-five and sixty, you would be not considered.
So then the short answer is I don't know of any issue there. Okay, so is that enough on E? Thank you. H, who had H?
Excuse me, can I just ask one question? Is there no money coming to us then?
No?
Is that a law line here?
No, no.
We're shifting the motion to two thousand six hundred ninety-six.
Two thousand six hundred ninety-six.
Is that, is that coming to us then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you. H, who had H besides me?
I don't care. Okay, I was a little unclear what we were being asked to do here. It looked like there's two things, one, approve the structure of the board, and two, approve the contract. Is that, is that, we want, or did we, are we being requested for two decisions tonight?
Not to approve the contract, but just to add input to the con, input what we think of the contract. There are some options there of, of how the board is made up, and I know that some jurisdictions want elected officials, I've spoken in the past, that I don't think elected officials should be there. Mr. Caciulli reported in the paper that the City of Trail, I'm aghast, but the City of Trail now doesn't want elected officials in there. So it's not a question of disbanding or whatever, it's just what we think, how we think the board should be made up, should we have elected officials, should we, I mean, it's basically an open discussion, because we haven't, you know, the, oh, and the regional district meeting on this has just been moved. So they're talking now about November, or perhaps even deferring it to the new year, to the new council, on for the makeup of the board. All I need is some direction, and the other thing is the term of the agreement. The LC, or the LCCDT, which is too confusing, and the LCI are asking for a five-year agreement, and I suggest that five years is too long, I suggest it would be three at a maximum. So that's kind of where I'm at, and if anybody has any input into that, then I appreciate it. Yeah?
Well, my input is, I think it works fine the way it is, I don't have a problem with the, with the structure, so I would say, keep the structure as it is, and I also don't have a particular problem with five years, but I'd also be okay with three. That's the little...
The only, the only problem we have is when we have elected officials sit on the board, is that the elected official attends the board meeting, and the board meeting deals with money, and those money requests come back to a council, so the elected official sitting on the board is either in conflict down there, or in conflict here. So that's the, one of the issues. The other issue is when it gets political, when it's, when you're sitting around the table arguing for ten cents here, or ten cents in my municipality, or ten cents in somebody else's municipality, it really loses the effectiveness of what they're supposed to be doing. So I, I lean towards a, you know, an appointment, appointed by council, but not elected official. I lean to that.
Which option was that? Was that number two there?
Uh, that's...
No, like, number two. Okay, but...
Two, I think there was two there. But I mean, that's, that's all fine tuning, I just, you know, I just, I'm just asking, you know, what you guys think, or if, and if you think that we should have this whole, give them a three-month contract until the new year, and have that discussed in the new year, then that's fine as well, I mean, doesn't matter to me, but I know Trail wants to proceed with it, at the meeting, the next meeting, for some discussions, yeah?
So what was the intention of, you know, option two A, where City of Trail retains their elected official, but nobody else does, because that was out of them?
Yeah, thank you. What happens is Trail, when it was first, when the service was first formed, which I sat on, Trail felt that because they put in the majority of the money, they should have the majority of say, and I guess that makes sense. But, so they're saying that because it's our money, mostly our money, then we want to be there politically.
I say, you know, either you have, you stick with the status quo, which includes, or you go with no elected officials, because to me, that seems a little ludicrous, regardless of how much money they pay, so I'm certainly not in favor of that. Can you give more feedback about, well, I guess, what you said about the elected officials? So do you think it would be as effective?
Personally, I think it would...
Accountable, oh, okay.
Personally, I think it would be more effective. And I think it would be more accountable, because it would be accounted for better, because there wouldn't be reliance on elected officials to be the accountants, so to speak, you know what I mean? The board itself would have to make sure that each municipality is very aware of where they're going, and do that formally to each municipality. And the other thing in the contract, if you notice, it's, there's a get-out clause of a hundred and twenty days or something, so, you know, even if you were to agree to five years, they can get out in a hundred and twenty days. Okay, so, I'll just, let me just summarize then, if this is all right with everybody, this is what I plan on doing at the meeting in November, is I will, because I might get outvoted anyway, but I will, status quo is not the worst thing in the world, right? Three-year contract is way better than five, right? And we could wait, if that's not acceptable to everybody there, because don't forget, it could be outvoted, then we should wait till November third, and there's new people around. So that's pretty much good for everybody? Okay, so then we can move off of H then, is that right? Okay.
So could I, just for clarification, so option two and three years, is that where we're at right now? Option two, no elected officials, or status quo?
Well, I, I think...
Or...
Or, yeah, or, and we have to sort of go with the flow here, right? And if Trail's saying no elected officials, then I, I think that, I'm going to agree with that, right? I know other jurisdictions are really...
Otherwise, you would go to status quo, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and you're saying three years for the contract for the LCI with the funding?
Yeah, and a hundred and twenty, they can get out of the get-out clause.
So can you, sorry, three years as opposed to five, just longevity of, you're just allowing...
Yeah, I wouldn't jump over councils. It would have, it would be like, in three years, it would be new, this new council would be looking at it, right? And then in the fourth year, it'd still be the same council, so they would have the benefit of all of what's gone down, to see if they approve it, because then they would have the history, not a fresh council that walks in there and...
Right, thank you for that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So option two does not have the municipalities appointing anyone? Option four does?
Yeah, whichever one, and I don't, I...
Okay, because it's two non-elected members nominated jointly by the other six jurisdictions and appointed by the ten services.
But it would be...
So we want, we do want some control, yeah.
We want input there, yes.
Yeah, I guess that's the thing for me about going away from having elected officials on it, is then, it gets, I mean, and they're spending money that we're responsible for, right, too, and now we've got people that aren't elected.
But they, yeah, well...
So I definitely want to have...
Let's not forget that the LCCDT, who is the parent of the LCI, are not elected by anyone.
Well, right, but there are elected officials there.
There are some there, but not many.
Well, everybody, every municipality has somebody there, right, elected official there.
But the board itself is not elected. They're appointed.
No, that's right, that's right, but there is, I just don't want to get us too far away from having elected...
And I get that, and I don't even, I don't want to lose control, I just want to make it a little better and easier to work, that's all. Okay, so I have direction, and if you can make notes of that, please, Cynthia, so that I have those notes, thanks a lot. So we'll move on to Kay, if that's all right with everyone. Kay?
Yeah, I had a couple things on Kay. I noticed in their September minutes that they raised a question about the heritage aspects of the doors and windows on Pro Hardware, and then, they seemed to be questioning it, and then they had some conversation about it elsewhere, and came back with, then the idea was, you know, they need a workshop, there needs to be a workshop to talk about it. So I, there's a gap in there that's missing, of what they learned when they went to the city, or went to the Heritage Review, I mean, the Design Review Committee, what they learned, because those doors and windows don't look very heritage to me either, right? So I was just interested in that.
Well, well, it's quite a long story. The, it's a long story. The people that own the building went to Architects, and Stacy, jump in there if you want, went to Architects and had a design, and it was revised five or six times, and it went through the design review people five or six times, and the design review people, and that's a volunteer group that helps us with our design review, that does the signage. They looked at the designs, and they made a recommendation to council, which council approved, to go with that design. Council approved it in the design review panel, and that's right?
With this design, you saw it?
Yes, we approved that.
Oh, well, because we approved the minutes, we approved the minutes, but we didn't see any...
No, it was in, it was in an information...
Information.
So anyway, that was approved. So Heritage Commission's concerns are the fact that, in this design, some elements of the heritage are not reflected in that renovation. So there's two things that happened, and again, Stacy, help me out if I get in trouble here, but the design of the current building, the architects took into account the existing front, so they wanted the existing, the new side to tie in with the existing front. However, and they were presented with the design guidelines, the architects knew the design guidelines, they knew all that stuff. So then the architect for the building owner came up with that design, and that design was approved by us and the Heritage, and the design review panel. Heritage Commission feels that there was not enough emphasis placed on the heritage of that building, because it is the Hunter Brothers? Hunter Brothers building, and it goes back quite a ways. So the conundrum is, as has been mentioned earlier today, make it a little easier for developers, or make it a little easier to maintain heritage. So there was, that was the conundrum. So the design, or sorry, the Heritage Commission wants us to look at the guidelines, revisit the guidelines, perhaps get Mr. Inwood, who I believe is still on retainer, he's not out of budget, but he's still in retainer, who did the design review guidelines, to come, have a presentation to the design review...
Heritage and council.
Panel, Heritage and council, so that we're all on the same page, and I think it's a good idea, the same page as to where this is. After all that is, how was that, not...
Good summary, okay, good, all right.
Anything more on Kay then?
Shouldn't, I mean, doesn't it make sense that, now, I know it's going to sound crazy, but doesn't it make sense that the Heritage and the Design Review are just folded into one committee?
Makes total sense, at least there's representation of both.
And then you got total representation, then we don't have any of these issues? Well, you may have issues that are, that could come up, but you wouldn't have these similar issues, it doesn't make sense to have two committees, in my opinion, that are kind of overlapping on almost everything that they do. If you talk about any design review that we do in the City of Roseland, it's got to have heritage involved, so why would you have two committees and then have this situation? Is there any way that we can encourage an amalgamation of the two committees somehow?
And that's the, that's the discussion we're having right now at the Heritage Commission, Cynthia, Cynthia is going like, this is like crazy, and it does make sense, totally makes sense, and, yeah, to get to that point will be another milestone. Miss Peter? Yeah, so anyway, yeah.
Well, I think that's a good idea, I mean, we could even have a streetscape committee, and then, you know, there was like this revolving kind of door that never caught up with each other, but, you know, design review has to do with heritage, but heritage doesn't always have to do with the design review, like they, you know, they deal with cemetery and all kinds of, you know, their registry and all the things that they do and work so hard on, but they could amalgamate, have, you know, design review business at the beginning, and then do the heritage after, and if people didn't want to sit through all that...
Or, or share, or share...
Or have a subcommittee.
Yeah, share, share board, share board chairs.
The design review doesn't only deal with heritage, the design review also looks at multifamily buildings, which aren't heritage, the guidelines for multifamily, which council just approved, is not heritage, and they also look at that.
That's why they have, you know, they, they will, you know, they potentially could say, well, we have different, you know, mandates, or, you know...
They do overlap.
Yeah, they do overlap.
And they should get together when they overlap. Where they overlap, they should be able to get together, and we're working on that as we speak.
What I was going to say is, it strikes me as one of the nicer buildings in town, the bookstore up the street on Washington. That was a, you know, it's a lovely building, but if you look at the old pictures of Roseland, it doesn't necessarily fit any of the heritage. I mean, it's beautiful though, but...
Okay, so that's Kay, is there any more on Kay, on heritage? I hope I explained it. K, L, M.
Oh, I want to say, can I just say something? I said this before about their minutes, and I'm not sure if staff, is it their typing font, or whatever it is?
For the Heritage?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Well, it has to be, because it's kind of a sad font, it's hard to read, it's petty, is that on? Oh, anyway, I find it, like, the letters, look at, like, the letters combined.
Oh, that's from the...
It's not the font, okay, thanks.
Okay. Design Review Panel Minutes.
That was me.
Okay, I'm very uncomfortable with this, you know, they're basically, they're basically, and then we did hear from new business in town, we need to be supporting our businesses, and the policy, the, the report here basically says, no, 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 to everything, right? Without offering some suggestions about how to make it workable, we also have, you know, one of the recommendations is to take the signage off the back of the building for both Laundry Dog and Brewery, you know, that we, you know, had trouble with the sign on the road, now we're saying no to the sign on the development building, you know, and I think we're, we're missing the point here, we have a lot of empty storefronts in town, and we need to be working harder to make our businesses, help our businesses thrive, and signage, particularly for one that's in basically a back alley, needs some help. I don't find anything offensive about the sign on the building, I think there should, there needs to be a sign on the building, I'd like to see it have an arrow, right? It doesn't have an arrow, so perfectly fine font that says Brewery, on the sign that says Roseland Brewery is, you know, I, I, maybe you can make it heritage by put a, put a heritage frame around it, and then be able to put it on the building, you do something, we need to be able to, the property owner said it's okay to put the sign up, the sign itself, when you see their logo of Roseland Brewery, it looks like Roseland, right? It's got a big Roseland emphasis on it, somebody's, you know, coming up the road. So I'm not in favor of these recommendations in here at all, I think we need to work harder to work with the business owner, certainly this one, also Laundry Dog, since they're requesting those signs be removed, and I don't think that should happen either. So I, I'm not in favor of these policies at all. In fact, I'd like to direct, to rep staff to work with the owner, the design review committee, to work with the owner, to figure out a way that they can get a sign that is acceptable, a big, you know, a large sign that can go on that building, there's nothing on that building to come up, and I think we need to do that. I mean, the other thing you go back to, those signs on the highway, as I recall, and staff may correct me on this, but the initiative to take down those few billboards that were along the way coming up from town, was the initiative of a previous, two CAOs ago, they don't think it was a direction of council, and...
No, 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 no.
Oh, was, did we say that?
All right.
Oh, sorry, I don't remember then, I probably thought it was a bad idea then, or maybe I made the motion, who knows? Anyway, those, those, those signs too, I mean, I think we need to look at the policy there, and make it a little more sensible to support the businesses.
Okay, I'm going to just go there for a second, because I think there's a couple answers.
And we have some policy, it's a bylaw, it's a non-bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
That's his only...
That's a warning bylaw, that's what you have to do.
And we can always amend, there's only...
Yes, you can. Yes, Ms. Lightborn, you wanted to say something as well?
So I'll just give a little bit of background on the two signs, with now the signs that are up already, they have been approved, the big one on Esthetist Columbia, and the one above the door already have been approved, it's for two additional signs. So the one on the Velvet Building, and...
Just clarifying where that one is.
So that's where Andy Tell's building, right opposite the old grind, right on the corner.
Yeah, or the old, you want them there?
On the back of that building, as you're coming up the hill.
Oh, I couldn't make the, I know Velvet Building, but I couldn't make the connection between there and there, okay, thank you.
And I guess, to summarize the thoughts from the design review committee, while two business owners being on, they said, well, I want my sign there, and I want my sign there, and that was basically, why can't, if, if him, why not me? And that was the, and there is guidelines against it too, but that basically summarized their thinking. And for the other sign on the back of the building, they did offer a solution for that, they just didn't want to see the differing signs that are there right now, Laundry Dog and Brewery looking different. They thought it would look great if maybe all the signs looked like Brewery, and one said Laundry Dog Brewery, maybe Bike Shop, maybe Esthetician, there's a bunch of, some kind of directory sign for that side of the building, pointing to all those businesses which stood their signage down the side, Faridou Alley, they just wanted them cohesive, so it wasn't just, like, the Bike Shop, well, their sign is going to look completely different than the Brewery, which is going to look completely different than Laundry Dog, which isn't, but that was their thought. So they were trying to offer a solution.
Counselor Fisher. Oh, that's okay, I was going to make a summary. Counselor Fisher.
You can tell me.
Well, I think council should be doing everything, everything we can to support our businesses that are already in town, and to promote new businesses coming into town. That's what's keeping this town alive. We got to, if we have to make some amendments to bylaws, or to some other recommendations, I think we have to do, we have to keep our businesses busy, we have to keep them alive in town. If we don't keep our businesses alive and promote new businesses to come here, the town isn't going to do nothing, so we, we have, as a council, I think we really have to promote, promote our businesses, and how we do that, if we have to make amendments to bylaws or whatever, I think that's what we have to do.
So through you to staff, what Ms. Lightborn was saying was, there were recommendations coming up of the design review committee that did have room for putting signs up on other buildings, like a directory, there is, so why don't we just say, ask the business owners to work with that? Well, even if they don't want to work together, I guess what I'm saying is, if three of them want to pay for it, and two of them don't care, go with the three that want to, and have it so that it's scalable, and you can add more if you need to at a certain point, but, but the person that gets added would have to pay their fair share, I mean, I'm sure they're not getting those signs for free. So, so I would say that if there is a solution, then we can leave, I'm sure Petrie and some of the other business owners would be happy to find out that there is room to have a sign of some sort with directional signage, right?
Yeah, I think it's just being questioned, if there's a few, a few directions questioned, is that okay, my answer?
You can, but I, yeah, I think we're having a discussion amongst council, but go ahead, Petri, please.
It's just because there's three things in question. And along the highway up on the pink Development Building, there was that one. And then there's the ones that are there existing now in the back. When you come down from the ski hill, you see that. And then there's also the one that was said no, that would've been above the wall along where Tyler's Bike Shop sign would be. So essentially, if you're driving any direct, if you're driving down the Main Street of Roslyn, it's just very difficult to see into that middle corridor. That's what I'm, my main thing is here. So if there's any way that we can have a sign...
I think what we're trying to work with right here, and I think you're, you're hearing that, is how we...
The directory was in the back.
Is how we can make it work. But I think also it's very important for all of us to understand that councils and the citizens of Roslyn in the past have spent millions of dollars, millions of dollars on our streetscape. And we have spent millions of dollars protecting our heritage and our community. And the reason we have a downtown like we have today is because of the work of past councils and, and past Roslanders who, for example, took all the telephone poles off the front street and put them back in the alley at the cost of millions of dollars. And the reason we have what we have is because we make, uh, decisions to maintain that kind of heritage, and that's why we have it. And the reason that we have a Design Review Panel is not to make it onerous on business at all. It is there to make it so that it, there is consistency with our heritage theme and with the efforts of those that came before us. So it's very important that we don't just, and I don't, well, I use the word willy-nilly, but I don't mean it that way. We can't just willy-nilly put signs up. There has to be a plan. There has, they have to fit into some kind of framework, and I think that that is what we're trying to do, and that's what the Design Review Panel is trying to do. Ms. Butler?
I think it would be, um, a good idea that before council makes any changes to those bylaws or policies or the design guidelines, they wait till after they've had the workshop with Bobby Wood, so he can speak to the intent of those design guidelines and how to fit into, um, your...
I guess all I'm saying is that the Design Review Panel gave a window of what an opportunity would be, and I'm just saying the business owner should go back, work with the Design Review Panel and get the, that window framed and get up the signs. We need to get up now, um, and move it forward. And one last thing, could you just say millions with your pinky up like that?
Did you get that on the phone? Counselor.
Okay, I, I agree with that. I think that's a good, that's a good strategy. I also, when I think of the directory that's on the side of the old Pro-Harbor building, when you're coming up Washington, it's kind of small, it's blocked out, and I'm sure it's approved, and everybody thinks it's fabulous, right? I almost never notice it, right? Because it is so uniform, right? When you come down Washington and you see Brewery written on the building and you see Laundry Dog sign, which maybe could be made to look a little more heritage somehow, but you do see it. So I think we have to be really careful about, about having this, like, iron-cloth application of, of things. You have to, maybe the, the, uh, guidelines need to be a little, mean to have a little more flexibility into it, because we're a very creative-looking town. We're not a Bavarian theme like Kimberly, and we don't wanna be, right? So we've got to, we, we are our own, well...
No, but Kimberly's busting their butt to get rid of that.
Well, maybe, but I'm, and, and for good reason, right? So I think you have to be careful to get too rigid, and especially being too rigid when we've got businesses that, that need some support, right? So...
Well, the guidelines are that, are just that, guidelines.
Yeah, but they're being applied very firmly, and there are other signs in town that don't meet them at all, right? So...
Yes, I do know that there are guidelines, and that's what the Designer Review has to go by. And they go through and they try to evaluate every application, whether it be for windows or Pro-Harbor and their guidelines and signs, according to those guidelines. Council does have the option at any time to...
That's right.
To recommend against what the Designer Review says, but I would caution council that that could open the door.
And I think what we, what we have here, and I think what we've discussed is, is that there may be, well, be a workable solution. And I think that if the old business owners want to come back and present to you and to your panel again, and then that's fine, and we can work something else. But as it stands, these are the recommendations of the Design Review Panel. Anything further on this? Yeah?
I haven't really attempted to speak.
Sure.
So, yeah, I mean, I, you know, the rigidity of it or whatever, you know, however you wanna perceive these criteria that are there, they have been around for obviously that reason, for heritage. But I also feel that, um, you know, I even brought up, you know, the, the sandwich boards a while ago, right? And everyone kind of laughed at me on the table, because I said, you know, some of them are great and some of them are terrible, but nobody seemed to care. They're eclectic. And I kind of like that, that, you know, people can have their own flavor with their signage. Um, and I agree with Counselor Moore that, you know, firstly, time marches on and things evolve and towns change. And so within that context, you know, maybe it's time to have that presentation from Mr. Inwood and to have some conversation about, I will use the rigidity of the heritage theme, because I personally generally like the heritage theme, but I think we have room in Roslyn to have other types of buildings, of signs, that actually lend themselves to a diversity in the flavor of our community. So I'm looking forward to having this conversation. Um, and I do wanna see some solutions for the business owners, because I, as Counselor Thatcher said, I feel very strongly that we have to support all of our businesses and to the best of our ability, help them to be successful. And we used to have no signage in Roslyn. Now we have lots of great signage. So let's work together, find solutions that work for everybody, because, um, that's what we need to do.
All right. Anything further?
So are we leaving it that the business owner will work with Design Review to try and...
Well, the recommendations, we'll approve the recommendations, and then they, they have to get back together and come up with a solution. That's, if we approve the recommendations, right?
Okay, but the recommendation is to take the signs down. I'm not voting for that.
I'm not voting for that either. So I'm not voting for the recommendation.
So catch the motion?
Yeah.
So the motion.
Well, then, okay, then it's...
Well, there's two recommendations.
Yeah.
Well, where's the first?
Read the first one, please.
Yeah.
The Design Review Panel recommends to council not to approve signs following reasons quoted in the city's guideline guidelines. And that was the hanging sign on the Velvet Building. That was the first recommendation. And also, and, and the west side of Columbia Avenue, um, Revolution sign. So that's the, that's the first motion.
Well, what if, what if you did, what if we considered, um, no, I, I mean, there's recommendations from a Design Review Panel that following guidelines that are set by the City of Roslyn. And if we're not going to, it's a bit of a slap in the face to the, to that, to that panel. What if you just had a moratorium until we had, and leave the signs up that are there, they're not considered permanent? We let the business owners, these are not permanent signs, but we'll, we'll leave them up for now, until we have a review, um, with this above Inwood or however we do the review, and come up with a solution that falls within, um, some amended guidelines. But I would not recommend flatly turning this motion down, because you've got a committee that's worked hard and followed the rules that are presented to them. So if we need to change the rules, we have a moratorium on taking the signs down for now, explain fully to the owners of the businesses, these are not considered permanent signs. We're gonna review these guidelines and, and possibly change them with input from both the committee and Inwood. That's what I, that would be a motion of some sort that I would suggest. But I, I would not be voting in favor of saying no to the Design Review Committee.
But there's two more.
All right, but the first motion is...
There's actually three.
Just one second, thank you. First motion that Mr. Fisher is saying is that we put a moratorium on...
Taking them down, leave them up for now.
Taking the signs down until we have a review of the design guidelines.
Yeah.
So are you applying that to the part that says sign two and then that the recommendation about taking signs down? Because there's, there's two things, right? This other one is above the left side.
No, that's not my right. The first motion is to deal with the application itself, which was for two signs, so sign one and sign two. But then that, the discussion that happened as a result of that application resulted in motion two.
Right, in the other motion two.
So the first motion has to deal with Petri's specific application, which was for one sign on the back of the Velvet and one sign above the Revolution sign on the left side of the building.
Which is the classic black paint that is on the Roslyn...
No, no, please, Petri, I'm gonna ask you, thank you. It's confusing enough without, sort of, go ahead again, please, Stacy.
So basically, that was his application, for one sign on the Velvet and one sign above the Revolution sign. So that's the first motion.
And that motion, and that was...
And that said not to approve either of those signs.
Not to approve? Right, for the reasons that we mentioned earlier. So, all right, so then let's just go with that one to start with. Is there a mover to that?
Well, I'm gonna move it to talk about it.
Thank you. Seconder?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, here.
And all I would say is that, that there, if they're gonna say no to both of those, there has to be a yes somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
So send it back to the committee and say, we'd like the guy to be able to have a couple of signs up. Is there any way within our guidelines that we can get this done?
Yeah, that's...
That's actually a recommendation, Counselor, too.
And if they say no, if they say no to that, then I would say, then we're gonna have to change the guidelines if, if that's what we wanna do. I don't wanna approve something here, like, going against our guidelines. That's just not right. We either change the guidelines or the committee figures out a way to get it done.
So the committee's recommendation is, is to not approve those two signs, right? That's one of the recommendations. So if council agrees, then we do not approve that. And we can say, as a subject or whatever, in that motion, that the Design Review Panel work with the business owner to find an acceptable solution to the signage requirements. Right?
Yeah.
Why, could you amend the motion and add that?
Yeah, well, that would be an added, yeah.
Part of the motion, because then that makes, that puts it back to them, but could include...
But I mean, the, the whole issue, the whole issue is with putting it on those two buildings, as was explained earlier, is the business owner now says, well, I'm gonna rent some signage space to somebody else and slap it on the side of a building. That's what's gonna happen.
Can I make a comment? Could we separate these two things? Because I think...
That's what I think we're trying to do right now.
But I'm saying, separate the discussion of the Velvet Building sign, separate from the signage on the west side of Columbia?
Well, I think...
And then also in the third one would be taking the sign off the back. There's three different, three different sign locations we're talking about, the Velvet, the west side, and the north side.
The Velvet, yeah.
And I think we could handle each one separately, because I feel very, I feel quite differently about all three.
Well, the Velvet and the, and the west side are a question of hanging signage on a building.
But you don't...
And you just open the can of worms. That's the issue. It isn't, it isn't, the Beer Company, it isn't that at all. It's the issue is, do we want to open this up to, I don't know, what's next? Neon, we fought like heck to get rid of neon signs. There's still a couple left out there, but...
I love neon.
Do you love neon? Oh, good, so then you can, you can change that when you're up there. Anyway, we, we're getting hung up on this one. So the motion is...
So can we separate it?
Well, we have a motion and it's been seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the motion?
Uh, Cynthia can tell us.
Not, not to go, I mean, the motion was the motion sitting there.
Oh, the motion was the motion that was here, okay.
Except for Amanda to...
To add.
See if we can get a way to work around it, if the Design Review Panel will...
And stop, you have to add stuff. The Design Review Panel can find an alternative.
Not to approve until such time as...
Well, we're just, no, we're just gonna...
Because you're gonna have to change the guidelines or make it work.
Basically send it back?
Yeah.
No.
What do you know?
Well, I mean, that's, I know, but seven people talking at once here.
I know, I was waving again. It wasn't me. No, you're speaking.
Now that we've lost the track.
Do you want a motion?
Yes. Cynthia, please read the motion, and can I get this talk in order here? It'd be great. Ms. Enyu, well, thank you.
...result that council approves the Design Review Panel's recommendation to not approve the signage proposed in the minutes of October seven of two thousand and fourteen regarding the Velvet Building, um, and to refer the heading back to the Design Review Panel.
And stop, for, and stop to de, to explore alternatives. Is that what, that's the intent of that motion?
So we're just talking about the Velvet Building in this motion?
Exclusions of...
Well, is that what you wanted to do?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we wanna do.
Place for the clarification.
Velvet, though. Okay, any further discussion on the Velvet? On the motion, all in favor?
So it's gonna go back to the, find a solution to do something with signage on the Velvet?
You just read the motion.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because I was expecting your statement. So...
Okay, on the motion, all in favor?
Not sure.
Pose. Motion's carried.
Okay, I'd like to make another motion. Make another motion.
Okay, Cynthia, you got that? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so to deal with the, the west side, right? And they're saying that we shouldn't, that we shouldn't approve this, because it doesn't comply with the following guidelines. There should be no more than one fascia sign for each business occupying a parcel. That's one thing of it. One sign allowed each distinct facade module. Signage should be coordinated with overall building facade. So I think, I understand that that's the policy, but I also think in this case, because the building is at the, the business is at the very back of the building, there's no way, it would make sense when you're on the, on the front, you know, on the front Columbia. But when your building is, when your business is in the back, you need to be able to have some other signage pointing to it, and it's at different directions. It's not like there's five signs when you come down Washington Street that says Brewery, 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 right? It's not like that way. It's one sign there, one on, on each of those other signs, pointing to something that otherwise you would never see. I don't find this at all offensive. So I would like to say that we allow this signage, but I, I do like the fact the signage should be coordinated, right? So there could be, maybe it could be that it's something temporary for now and that it will be coordinated.
So can we just kind of get to what your motion is and then you can get it seconded and then we can have a discussion?
My motion is that we allow the signage, we allow temporary signage on the west side.
Temporary?
Well, I could say temporary, because I, I do like the idea of signage coordinated for the overall, overall building, right? I think that's a good idea. But in the meantime, we've got a business that's underway.
I get that. The motion. I just wanted to make sure that temporary was in the motion.
Temporary is in the motion.
Please, continue with the motion.
Temporary motion, temporary motion, temporary sign.
Temporary.
Yeah, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, let's see, signage allowed, and then until such time the signage is coordinated for the overall building facade. Okay? So this would allow them to put up signs on that side, and those signs could stay until there's a coordinated plan for the building. That way, we're supporting the business, we're still giving the opportunity for heritage to come in and have its, you know, well, in the Design Review to come in and have it, and have it say, coordinate plans for the whole building. Because I do think that's a good idea, but in the meantime, you know, we should support Because I do think that's a good idea, but in the meantime, you know, we should support the business.
First of all, to get a second here, all in favor. Thatcher, okay, Ms. Butler, I'll let you speak, because there's more stuff to watch.
Just a staff concern with that, is that what if they never do coordinate those?
Well, dang, then a sign is gone there, and we're supporting the business. There could be worse things that happen.
You're darn right, there could be. And just wait till you drive down Washington Street. Go ahead, Counselor Thatcher.
Well, I, I like the temporary, you know, if it's temporary, and if nothing is coordinated with that building, then always say, well, it has to come down, because it's word in the motion is temporary. I think that there's, every summer, you know, a sign has to be located on the west side, just because it's, people have to know where it is. It's, if anybody up from out of town was looking for it, you know, they might have problems. It's, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a compromise until we have another meeting with, what's the fellow's name? I forget, Mr. Enyel, but, you know, until there's a meeting there, I think it's a good compromise until, until that happens.
Yeah, I, again, going to, point's made earlier. If we're going to do that, then what we better do is know that we're going against the guidelines. And I think you better be prepared for the consequences of that, because the people that are putting in the effort to maintain what we have in this town, and do it as a totally volunteer effort, do so with the guidelines that have been adopted by the city of Roseland. So, if we're going against our own guidelines, and against the recommendations of those that we asked to help us with the guidelines, we better be prepared for some issues. Miss Lightburn?
Yeah, and just further to that, the discussion with the design review, they highlighted the esthetician place at the back of the old liquor store, or liquor store there. Now, they said, well, she has a sandwich board that shows that she's down there, and her only sign is above her awning. And he said, that looks classy, and they said she has-
There are alternatives.
Their own.
For sure.
I don't know, I mean, we've developed a, we started developing what essentially is Sour Dough Alley, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And the design guidelines were put in place before we had anything in Sour Dough Alley. For all the people that love the sandwich boards, I don't like them at all. I think they look tacky, sitting all over the streets, but that's just me, and we allow them, so that's fine. I don't think they look any, I don't think a directional signage on the west side looks any worse than a sandwich board, of sitting in the middle of the street. And anyway, the point is, is that Sour Dough Alley is this new development, and maybe it's gonna continue down the back of the other buildings on the other side, and I think we need directional signage that way. We just need directional signage there, as simple as that. So, you know, maybe the sign that they had in mind is not suitable for that directional signage. Maybe the design review panel can assist in coming up with it, and that our exception would be having that directional signage there with, with approval from the design review panel on what it looks like. You know what I mean? Rather than what was presented. Maybe they don't like what was presented.
Stacy, can you speak to that, about the directional signage on?
On Washington is where they're talking, not on the west side. They were talking on the west side, and they did offer solutions. They said even like the existing brewery sign, like even just all the businesses being on that. And they gave, they gave that as an example.
Right.
But Ken Turner is a signage guy, who sits on the design review committee. And he said, oh, I could come up with some ideas. So, he was even thinking that in the meeting, and presenting it to the building owners, and, I mean, he can make some money off that too, right? So, he was thinking of some ideas. But that was just for the alley, not for the west side. They didn't really talk about that for the west side. Because Tyler's sign is there, his door is there. So, they just thought that's a sign that belongs there, not another one above it.
Go ahead.
Well, it's nothing really new, but I, you know, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, and I've been thinking the same thing about Sour Dough Alley, and that whole, you know, development of that heritage, you know, people heritage, heritage area of, of our downtown core. And I think it's exciting, and I think it's really exciting that, you know, you get to go around the back and buy your beer, like the old days or something, I don't know, there's something romantic about it. But I think, honestly, you said tourists not knowing where the brewery is? There's tons of people in town who don't know where the new brewery is, honestly. And it is a new business. And I just think we, yeah, it needs to be relooked at as far as the overall strategy for the downtown core with signage. And doesn't mean the design review, it's not disrespectful. To me, it's proactive for us to say as a council that it's time that we, we look at this whole strategy and the criteria within, being as Sour Dough Alley is being developed, there's new things going on in town. And having said that, when they talk about the facade module, does that mean, can you clarify those? Like, does that mean the whole building side? Does that mean the three new doorways on the west side? What does that mean, the module, facade side? The whole facade of that side of that building?
Side, yeah, okay, each side.
No, I, I'm for signage.
But I think, in reviewing, this is from the DRP. Reviewing this application, the DRP notes that the entire building needs a master plan to guide future signage decisions and prevent future compatibility issues. So, they recognize that we need to address this. Right? And to Counselor Fisher's thoughts, this is exactly where they are at as well, right? So, it's not like we're saying we're not gonna do anything. It's the fact that we have to revisit this, they're not in our guidelines, and the DRP is saying that, help us, right? Counselor Moore?
Okay, I think, you know, you have this concern of this flood of, of issues that are gonna come up, because we're going against our own guidelines. But I think we can articulate an exception here pretty easily, because we say we have very few businesses that are in this situation now, where they have a building where they could actually put signs on, you know, several, several sides of the building, right? A lot of the other ones, someone like Fancies, right, they can't do it, right? They're, they're surrounded by businesses. So, the fact that there's gonna be some huge problem, isn't gonna be a huge problem. But the fact that it's a huge problem for the business that's back there, because there's no way for people to know that he's back there. So, I think we have to apply some common sense to our guidelines. And I'm sure our design review, they recognize the problem, they're willing to do it. But let's just get ahead of it a little bit, help this business owner out, and then sit down and work with the design review people to, to make it, to make them compatible. Let's not say no. I mean, the thing of saying no doesn't help anybody.
I don't think that's what anyone's saying. I think that it's just how it's done, is what everyone's saying. It's how. We're not saying no, we're just saying how. And the design review panel is saying no to this, but they're not saying no to anything. They're saying no, but we need and, no and. We need to develop new guidelines for this situation, right? That's what they're saying. They're not saying no. As mentioned, there are other options that they presented that may fit better. Not that there's no signage, right? Slaper? Not that there's no signage. It's this application that they don't like. And there is a motion, and I'm gonna-
That's my question.
Yeah, but I just wanna, I wanna just make sure that we stay on that motion, because we're getting a little bit far afield here.
We're getting a little emotional.
Yeah, I know, so Cynthia's gonna let us know.
Temporary.
Yes, is the word temporary, yeah.
And did someone in council attend the design review panel meeting? I think it would be recommend, I recommend that someone goes to the next meeting.
We should have a council representative on there, should we not?
Yeah.
Stacy, thank you.
Well, certainly, and, and for all of this, you know, very valid-
Oh, yeah.
Conversation, it needs to, the design review panel needs to understand that, you know, this, this in-depth conversation has gone on. And for good reason.
No, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that they appreciate it.
And have it articulated, not them just read the minutes and go, oh, wow.
No, and, yeah, but I think they, it's recognized in their, in their report.
Yeah.
It's recognized, that they need some guidance with this, right? So, let's just go to the motion, which is to provide temporary signage, where was its location?
I'd like to see clarification around Counselor Moore. It should specify the north side of Columbia Avenue or the west side.
I think you should maybe roll both of those together, because we have the same issue, don't we? No?
One says take the signs down.
Yeah, I was gonna remove that, take the signs down part on the, on the third one, and make a different motion there. Kind of the same thing, just talking about making a plan, but not take those signs down. Which is basically the same as this one.
So, let's, can we deal with the motion that's here?
Result that council approves temporary signage on the west side, 1900 Columbia Avenue, until a signage plan is coordinated for the building.
Okay? And that one, all in favor? Motion's carried. Yeah, I know, no.
Well, I had a third one.
Just wait for the type of thing going here. So, the third one is?
So, the third one would be that the recommendation from the, from the committee there, but it would take out that first sentence, and it would just say that the DRP, that DRP is, well, what is that? DRP recommends, okay. So, that new businesses in this building, and other Sour Dough Alley businesses, should develop a directory sign for the side of the building, but to say nothing about taking those other ones down.
Well, we can't change their minutes.
No, but I'm saying our motion would be that we would, we were not accepting that, we're not sending a letter asking those signs to be taken down. We are saying that we think that the recom, the new, there needs to be a directory sign plan for that, for that side of the building, but we're leaving those signs there.
Well, then I think it should include-
We have to defeat the recommendation, then.
Well, I think we can, just, we don't really need to do that. We can make our own decision based on the recommendation, and that would be the-
Yeah, those are their media.
That would be the decision, that would be the decision that we make. But I think that, that if we were going to be consistent, then that should be temporary as well. Allow the temporary, right, on whatever side that was?
North, north.
Is it north?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Further discussion? On the temporary in the north, all in favor? Posed, motion's carried. Who had P? Yeah.
Good. Oh, I shouldn't have had the most of the sandwich words, but-
You can leave it for tonight.
I had O.
Oh, you just did that, didn't we?
No.
Oh, yeah, sorry, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the procurement services, is it?
Yeah, he is.
Okay, that sounds like a really interesting, interesting thing, and I'm just a little curious.
Thank you.
I'm just a little curious about, sort of, under what circumstances are we thinking of using the procurement service?
Not sure yet.
Ah, okay. And do we know any other municipalities who have used it, and what their experience has been?
Um, no, I'm not, I can't, I'm not a question.
Okay. And then, my last question. Would they be an appropriate body for us to give our procurement policy to, and have them make recommendations or revisions, or draft a new one for us?
No, they don't go that far.
Okay, okay, that's my question.
Anything more on O?
Yeah, you know, I was actually glad to see this. I thought that this was partly as one of, you know, as a result from the actions from the obiter general, and, and reaching out to other services that are out there, if, if we, you know, if we feel that we need this. So, obviously, if it's being suggested, then I'm assuming that we feel positively about it, that staff does. So, that's good. And I just kinda highlighted a whole bunch of the, you know, list of services. You know, research, chair, create, provide advice, evaluate, like, all the verbs are right, you know, as far as helping us with, with any issues around procurement, or even clarification of how our procurement policies are, are moving forward.
So, is that-
I'm a favor of it.
Thank you, so we're gonna move ahead with that, aren't we? Thank you. Anything further on O? Moving along to P for poverty.
That P for poverty rate setting, that was the grant. And I'm sorry Stacy left, because I just wanted to thank staff for preparing a successful application, because that's great, that helps us. I think our total cost on that was thirty thousand, wasn't it? We've got ten to-
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further on P?
So, I'd like staff to share.
There you go.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much. So, on the motion, on the information items, all in favor? Posed, motion's carried. 10A. Read it if you got it, Brian. 10A. A motion that the permissive tax exemption bylaw be adopted. Moved by Thatcher, seconded by Speer. Discussion, all in favor? Posed, motion's carried. Motion that the reserve fund establishment bylaw be adopted. Moved by Moore, seconded by Fisher. Discussion, all in favor? Posed, carried. Motion that the transfer reserve fund bylaw be adopted. Moved by Fisher, seconded by Speer. Discussion, all in favor? Posed, motion's carried. Members' reports. Here we go, Counselor.
Now that I know Carrie's so interested in hearing. Okay, I had an idea, and I'm hoping council will support this idea. In the last election, provincially wide, we had a thirty percent turnout, voter turnout, which is embarrassing. Roseland had a thirty-seven percent turnout, Trail had a thirty-two percent. Montrose was the highest, with forty-five. So, I'm thinking that we should have a challenge that we would give to the other, to the other municipalities. And our challenge would be that we challenge each of them to raise their voter turnout by as high as they can, by encouraging people to vote, right? And we get it in the press, our mayor would contact all the other mayors and say, we're challenging you. And whichever municipality raised their rate, the highest percentage over what they had last time, the other municipalities would then buy them pizza. So, not the whole town, just the councils, right? So, it's two things.
I think the whole town.
Well, it's one, it's, well, the whole town would be, you might not get people to enjoy, you know, go for it. They, there's a couple things. One, it's fun, right? It, we get some press on the election, we get some positive energy going for that. Hopefully, we get greater turnout. And we'd also get all of our five local municipalities councils to get together right after the election, and start to get to know each other, establish rapport, and all of that. So, that is what I had. I actually prepared a press release for it, which, I'm sorry, didn't circulate around before, because it's kinda last minute. But my motion would be that staff would circulate the press release to all local media, and that further the mayor would contact the mayors of the other four local municipalities, and issue the challenge. So, what do you guys think? Do you like that idea, do you think it'd be kinda fun?
I don't know how you're gonna increase voter turnout. I don't know how you're gonna do it.
You're gonna get talking about it, you're gonna get all the councils to talk about it.
You know how to get, you know how to increase it. Tell them we're gonna triple our stipend.
Okay, there you go.
And they're, Scott, I'm not kidding you. Give them something, reason to come out, they'll come out. There's no reason to come out, they aren't coming out. The reason that places like Montrose had such high voter turnout is because they had an issue.
They had an issue.
Right. And when, when in municipalities, there isn't a great big issue, I know you think there are great big issues here, and so maybe they, our turnout will be great. But in municipalities where people are content with what's going on, you're, they're not gonna get them out. Buy them pizza, or you can buy them a car, they're not gonna come out.
Well, why not try? Why, why?
Well, try all you want.
No, I mean, and you know, to me, the, but part of it, an idea like this, you get people talking about it, if all the councils of all the communities talk to everyone they knew, to say, come out and vote, if we got some press on getting, getting people to vote, I mean, it's just like, we, it's embarrassing that province-wide, thirty percent of people turn out for these elections. You have the biggest impact of voting in your local election than you do anywhere else. I mean, to me, it's fun, right? Why not have a little fun? Why can't we play and establish some rapport with the new councils?
I think we've tried that. Speaking of, speaking of buying pizza.
I know, but maybe we could try again, right?
Well, I, I, I don't know, I'm just, before I prove any, before I can vote here for any press release, I wanna see what it says.
Okay, you know what, I am really, I will give you-
And I'm not, I'm gonna do the press release, it's a members' report, sorry.
Okay, you can, you can, you can look at it. Okay, I'll give, I'll share it with you guys, and if you like the idea, how about, how about this? How about we say, we can vote on it if we like the idea after we read the press release, right? Then we can do it. It's not a big deal, this is more like a-
No, it's not a big deal, this is a members' report.
I know, but why? When else could I have done it, right? You don't easily-
Well, what, Counselor?
Well, you know, I mean, I appreciate the intention. You know, I don't know about buying another council's pizza, if that's gonna make any difference in the community. But, you know, I, I don't disagree that higher voter turnout, it would be, is recommended, and that, you know, I mean, you know, when you only have thirty-three percent of the people in your town turning out, it's not very favorable to no matter who gets elected. But, you know what, we live in a democracy, there's rules around democracy. You know, I'm all in favor of getting councils together and having more conversations as a region, for sure.
That's the best you can do, or?
But, I don't know, I have to think about it. I'm not prepared to vote on it.
Well, rather than this press release, if you wanna make a motion that we challenge the other communities to increase, I don't know, do you know what the numbers were from last year, from each community?
I know exactly what the numbers were, but I'm just saying, all we have to do-
What if Trail disputes your numbers, and say, we won?
It's from, it's from-
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
-Cinco C, right? You know, the thing is, it's just whoever has the greatest increase on their own number. So, you're beating yourself. We had thirty-seven percent, we had forty-four percent.
Oh, no, I get that, I get that, I get that.
So, if we got forty, you know, it's fun, right? And actually, it's not the main thing of benefiting the communities, it's the main thing of getting the councils together too afterwards. That we do a fun thing together with the other councils.
We get it, we get it, we get it.
Okay.
We are, we are doing the, wearing a ceremony with the wine and cheese.
That's good, that's good. You know what, I think-
So, we can present the trophy?
Yeah, there you go.
We can present the trophy with the wine and cheese, how's that? Huh?
The trophy, there we go.
What, what is, what is Counselor, I? Counselor Moore would like to have a contest to increase voter turnout. Does everyone agree with that? Let's just go there.
Well, I, I'm not ready to make a decision right now. And I thought, you know, I mean, we go from where, you know, councilor, you're, you know, extremely serious, you know, most of the time here. Nobody laughed, except me and Craig, funny joke, and nobody laughed at that. And I mean, I like fun, that's me, that's my personality. Um, this is a serious business we're in and every time, you know, we, we, we work together, it is serious business. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to, you know, challenging, um, but I don't know, I need to think about it. I can't, I can't make a...
I think you might want to read the motion or read the, because I read it and just being, uh, bit of a...
It is hokey, hardy.
Putting my...
Oh, listen to this, when councilor, oh my God, I hope that's what you read.
I did, I was just about to say with, with my pessimistic hat on, um, it's...
My God.
You can change the words.
It was, um...
You can say it with your ideas, right?
I don't want to say it's my idea. If it was my idea, I wouldn't put it in there that it was anyway.
I, I suppose, it's, it's a noble, uh, truthfully, it is a noble, um, idea to want to see more people come out and vote.
Geez. Did you read? Maybe we should, they should maybe go in the input package. Does council wish to challenge the other municipalities to increase their voter turnout? Is there a mover to that?
I move it.
Is there a seconder to that? Perhaps we can give it some more thought and we could do that at the next regular meeting.
We can make a decision about it in December, I'll tell you.
Oh, fine. Whatever.
Well, not me.
All right, so anything else, councilor, members' report?
Um, let's see, well, I was going to tell you some of the things I learned at the UBCM.
Press release order so that Ms. Grawling can see what we're talking about?
Sure she can have it. I was going to talk about what I learned at UBCM, but I sent my notes around and so anyone who was interested in what was shared there can read them and, you know, that's it. Um, this was from a past information package. I really enjoyed the report that Sarah Pasternak, our school manager, wrote. And I don't know if we sent her a thank you, but I think it would be nice to send her a thank you letter for her service and also her really great ideas in that report. And I'm hoping that we adopt some of them for next year and I'm sure staff would be all over that because she had some great ideas. So I thought a thank you letter would be nice. I know that's really old news, but we haven't had members' reports since, I can't even remember when. Um, and that's it.
Thank you, council. Thank you, councilor, spirit.
Um, yeah, just, you know, briefly, I did attend the UBCM conference down, for part of it, um, down at Whistler and, you know, it's always enlightening, um, you know, there's lots of business meetings and resolutions during the day. There were panel discussions with ministers, one of which I attended in particular about strong communities. And Minister Fassbender was there, so I, I, I was interested to, to see him and I asked him a couple of questions. Um, the other thing that I, that I did at the UBCM was I took a tour, kind of history of the development of Whistler, which I found really interesting, just historically, how that whole resort evolved and how it continued to evolve through the Olympics. Um, I'm trying to think of his name, I have it in my other notes, but anyway, one of the fellows that came, he is probably one of the original, um, you know, one of the original people who crafted and was involved with the development of Whistler from, from the eighties and he was really interesting. Um, what else? Oh, I had lots of excellent conversations despite some people's thoughts about how it works at the UBCM. There's lots of social activities, but you're always in conversation with delegates from around the whole province. And I talked to from Granile, I talked to people from places I hadn't even, I hadn't even heard of, let alone knew where they were. And I learned a lot from talking to them, so that was really worthwhile. I also learned that our stipend is one of the lowest in the province. And I wasn't here on that occasion when councils discussed those stipends, but it's something that I think the next council, whoever that may be, should have some conversation about or at least have a, some kind of a committee to look into it. Um, the big policy paper there was about the ferry increases and that was a huge conversation and it, the, um, the policy paper pointed out the $2.3 billion decrease in the growth of domestic product for British Columbia for coastal communities. So this policy paper was just, it was so well done, if anyone wants to see a graph and, and information about the real impact of those ferry increases, but, um, the government is not attending to the policy paper. They more or less said that ferry costs, the price of taking the ferry is not going to change at all. Um, and it's really had a negative impact on coastal communities, like significantly. So that was, that was sad to hear, um, but interesting at the same time. A couple of things that I missed, um, and I just want to send my regrets to both Joyce Austin's retirement because I missed my flight back from Vancouver because of traffic and a car crash. So I'm very disappointed and I have gotten a card for Joyce Austin myself. And also Tom Drake, they have parents night at school the same night. So I missed both, loved the occasion, so that's unfortunate. Um, Chamber Commerce, I don't have any updates on that and that's all.
Great, thanks, thank you.
Well, some of you, some of you may or may not know, the museum hired a new manager. Her name's Joely Hodg, Hodgkins?
Joel.
Joel Hodgkins. Uh, she starts November third. Yeah, she's, yeah, she's moving down from Yellowknife, so it's a big move for her. Uh, say, start dates November third. Uh, I've had a few comments from people down the lower end of Roslin, how good Cook Avenue Park looks. It's, everybody says it looks really nice, but I've had a few concerns too, that just hope the kids don't start using it as a, the bank as a bike track. Because it's, I guess, there's been some kids seated on the, that slope there with their bicycles.
The seat is away?
Going to be, it's going to mesh.
They say it does look really good and they say it has some positive comments on it, but there was, there was a couple of concerns about, you know, kids riding on that bank, their bikes and that, so, other than that, that's about it.
Thanks a lot, so I'll just make a couple, oh, and I, those two retirements that you mentioned, they were well attended and it was well done by staff. Just to go to the, uh, UBCM, one of the issues was the Highway Three mayors met with the premier and the minister of transportation and the minister of, well, Sherdy Bond, whatever her title is these days, I can't remember, it's about four miles long. Anyway, the, the Highway Three mayors, we reiterated our priorities, which is the whole Princeton. I don't know if anybody drove down there and seen the work that they're doing on there. It's amazing, uh, what they've done there and also the, our priorities that were in the East Coopies, all have been accomplished. And Creston, Creston priority was to bypass around downtown, the highway bypass around downtown. That is, the first phase of that has begun. So the Highway Three mayors, by being unanimous in their priorities, have got a lot accomplished. And one, the other thing that was accomplished was the Highway Three Economic Impact Study that we all know was released, I guess, last year. So anyway, uh, yeah, we, we reiterated that and, uh, one of, one of the new things we brought up is a possible rebranding of Highway Three and calling it BC's Southern Provincial Highway. And Minister Bond was, I guess she's got something to do with tourism. They were very excited, yeah, she does because she was at the RMI, I got to write that down for you. Uh, she was very excited about that, so there's a possibility of rebranding Highway Three to get some provincial dollars and some tourism dollars to help promote the Highway Three quarter. You want to talk about Highway Three? Yeah, ask me a question, yeah.
Question about Creston. So, you know, whenever, you know, at town, I used to think about Hope, right? Music director Hope, right? And I just think it just decimates towns when they, the downtown core is missed. So are, is Creston in favor of that or do they have a way? Because to me, it just takes your business right away from your downtown, despite our, our semis, I go, at least people coming through.
Nope, Creston's all in favor of it. And they've been trying to get it done for a long time, so it's being done.
Do you have a question on Highways Two, if I could?
Highway Three?
Yeah. So is this thing, would it be called the BC Southern Provincial Highway? Is that going to be, is it going to get a name like, you know, the Sea of Sky or the, is it going to have some catchy name?
Well, it's, it's a rebranding and it's, it was our suggestion, it actually was Mayor Stetski, Cranbrook's suggestion, that it be called the Southern, BC Southern Interior, or the Southern, DC Southern Highway, Southern Interior Highway, I can't remember. But that was just a suggestion and the ministry, they were going to play with that. And we also said we wanted to maintain the crow, the really important, maintain the crow on the sign.
Yeah. I just think a better name could be...
Well, sorry about the name, but they're just trying to rebrand the highway.
I know, I understand the intent.
Thank you. The, um, you mentioned the ferries, so when we were at that meeting, what's his name, Transportation Stone, he said that they have meetings forever and he said that we had a one meeting with mayors from up north, or from the island. It said, "Every municipality in British Columbia is in favor of raising taxes to support ferries." That's what he said, and he's big smiling, I raised my hand and I said, "Yes, the city of Roslin is fully in favor if we can get a ferry to our city." So we might be getting a ferry.
Up the Columbia River.
Yep, we might be getting it. RMI funding, another meeting with Minister Bond, was a resort municipality, yeah, Minister Bond and Minister Yakamoto. Yep, uh, they, there was presentations by some of the resort municipalities and the questions were asked, how long is this going to happen? And they said, "What, all we know is that it's, the program has been capped for now and I guess it's sixteen."
Twenty fifteen.
Runs out in sixteen, but they said that, uh, don't count on anything any further. And they also said that be very careful where you use your money because we're watching. So I think that speaks to how we spend our RMI funding and we better stick to the guidelines. And I know we had a, a report in here today, but I just want to reiterate that that was set at, at the meeting with the ministers. Someone mentioned social activities and I agree totally that some of the networking that happens is a big influence in what happens. And I can say categorically that getting together with a few of our partners in the regional sewer service and the social atmosphere, was a big step. It was a big step into getting to a place where we can come up with a decision, where we came up with a decision that was amiable to all. So I'll just reiterate your points on that. Uh, many more, the mayor's caucus, I, I sent, tried to send a whole bunch of the mayors, but from up there, from down, they closed the button. I can't send down there, so I have to resend them, I guess, okay.
What did you send?
Information from the mayor's caucus. There was a bunch of resolutions, uh, some of my notes, but I couldn't send. I tried sending it on my phone, it was a disaster, so I'll, I'll get that to everybody. And a lot of it's in, uh, the iCompass as well, right?
Yeah, the iCompass covered a lot of it.
Anyway, that's, I'll leave it at that. So that would be my report for today. I need a motion to... I have to read it, it's important, so that everyone knows why we're doing it. Motion that the remainder of the meeting of October fourteenth, of fourteen be closed to the public pursuant to section ninety-one E, acquisition disposition of, or expropriation of land or improvements, or improvements of the community charter, move by. Spearan seconded by Moore, okay? Two-minute break, all in favor, sorry, two-minute break. More, camera, quarter after nine. Thank you very much, everybody, that was a lot of, a lot of potatoes there.
More neon.
More neon.
I love neon.
Butch, Butch. Butch Butch has been in business in that store for thirteen...